Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the August 4th meeting of the Columbia County Planning and Zoning Meeting to order. If you'd please stand with us. Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation, and I'd like to ask Commissioner-elect Couch to lead us in the pledge.
Y'all with bow with us. My dear Lord, we want to thank you for yet another beautiful day in Columbia County. We want to thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon this great nation of ours. We ask that you give us this evening to do the right thing. We ask that you look over all of our first responders that protect us day in and day out, our fire and rescue, our sheriff's office, all the EMTs out there. We ask that you give all of us a safe journey home from this meeting. Thank you for everyone who came out to join us this evening. In the name we pray, amen.
By the states of America, we the republic which stands one nation under God, physical liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. If I could ask you to please silence your cell phones during the meeting. We do have all five commissioners present tonight. Gentlemen, you've had a chance to review the minutes from our July 21 meeting. If there are no changes or amendments to those minutes, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most approve the amendments as submitted. Passes 5-0. Gentlemen, you've also had an opportunity to review the agenda for tonight's meeting, and if there are no additions or amendments to that, I need a motion for approval of that document as well.
So moved.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most approve the agenda as submitted. Passes 5-0. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning advance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on August 16th at 6:00 PM in these chambers. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Catherine Weiss to obtain a request to speak for them. We're less formal in this hearing during our public hearing section or during our public comments section. If you'd like to either add something about something that's on the agenda tonight, or if you have another item that you would like to address us about and have that on the record, please raise your hand. We'll call you to the microphone and take three to five minutes to give us your position on whatever your particular issue is. That being said, we'll move right into our agenda tonight. Ms. Montgomery, temporary use authorization at 8025 Lakeside Drive.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a temporary use for a travel trailer at 8025 Lakeside Drive. This is the location of the property, on the west side of Lakeside Drive, and currently zoned R4 recreational residential, as are all the surrounding properties. This shows the location of the proposed travel trailer in the middle of the site. It will comply with all of the building setbacks in that location. The applicant is in the process of constructing a house on the property. The land disturbance permit and electrical pole have been approved, and the septic system was to be installed at the end of July. So while construction plans for the house have not been submitted yet, they are making progress towards that end goal of having the house built on this property, and are requesting permission for the travel trailer to be able to live in it on weekends while they're under construction. And staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing. I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Commissioner.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the temporary use authorization at 8025 Lakeside Drive.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes 5-0. Ms. Montgomery, we'll stay with you. Final plat for River Oaks Phase 2.
Yes, sir. This is the final plat for Phase 2 of River Oaks located off Hardy McManus Road. This is the location of the site on the south side of Hardy McManus, and we are looking at this section here. It is currently zoned R2, single-family residential. And this section includes 44 single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 10,131 square feet, which exceeds the minimum required in R2 of 10,000 square feet. The required setbacks are 55 feet from the centerline of the roads and 10 feet from the side and rear property lines. Sidewalks and street trees are provided on both sides of the road, and 4.34 acres of open spaces provided in this section. This is the existing site, and staff recommends approval.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing. I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for River Oaks Phase 2 located off Hardy McManus Road.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most approve passes 5-0. Ms. Montgomery, final plat for River Island Section 2 Phase 3.
Yes, sir. This is the final plat for Section 2 Phase 3 of River Island located off Blackstone Camp Road. This is the location of this property on the north side of Blackstone Camp Road. It is currently part of the River Island planned unit development. And this section includes 61 single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 10,162 square feet and an average lot size of 16,729 square feet. This does meet the requirements for this section of the PUD. Setbacks are a minimum of 30 feet from the right-of-way and 10 feet from the side and rear property lines. There are sidewalks on one side of some of the roads that provide connectivity to a walking trail on Blackstone Camp, and through this back section connecting back to the pool and amenity area in the previous sections of River Island. Both of these trails are to be installed by the developer as part of the construction for this section and are to be complete prior to the expiration of the warranty period. There are 13.39 acres of open space in this section, and this is the existing site. And the walking path, one of the walking paths is mostly installed, the one along Blackstone Camp. So this is a view of that path, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing. I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve final plat for River Island Section 2 Phase 3 located off Blackstone Camp Road.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most approve passes 5-0. Ms. Montgomery, we've got a provisional home occupation for Eldowitz Farm?
Yes, sir. This is a request for provisional home occupation for Eldowitz Farm for farm tours. U-PIC crops and fishing at 6952 Moon Town Drive. This is the location of the property on kind of the southeast side of Moon Town Drive, currently zoned RA residential agricultural, as are all of the surrounding properties. So the applicant currently has several business licenses at this location, including one for Eldowitz Farm. The current scope of that business is the sale of eggs, chickens, and rabbits, which are allowed under the existing agricultural zoning. The proposal with the provisional home occupation is to allow for farm tours, the U-PIC crops, and fishing opportunities with the existing pond on the site. These services would be offered on an appointment-only basis for no more than six people at a time, and with a maximum of 12 vehicle trips per day in accordance with the home occupation requirements. Since it is intended to be appointment-only, it should be feasible for the applicant to monitor that and ensure compliance with those visitor and trip limits. The U-PIC area is noted in this large open space at the front of the property, and the applicants have provided a list of other animals that they do intend to keep on the property as part of farm tours. This is intended as kind of an educational activity for people to come and meet the animals and learn more about them. You do see there is an outhouse shown on this plan. There was a design for this provided with the application. The Health Department has indicated that this is not a viable option for a public restroom facility, and that any type of public restroom would require a septic system and a plumbed hand sink. We do have other farm tour businesses that have been approved in the county. There's two of them to date. To the best of our knowledge, these have not caused any issues for the surrounding properties for those two locations where the farm tours are already happening under these provisional home occupation restrictions, which again do limit the number of people allowed on the property as well as the number of vehicle trips allowed in a day. Staff is therefore recommending approval with conditions. The first one, clarifying again that the provisional home occupation cannot create more than 12 vehicle trips to the residents per day. That is outlined in the code. This is just kind of adding on to that. The applicant did also provide a list of possible future uses. He does have some vision of kind of growing this business. So he did include a future S1 business plan that would require rezoning of the property. We do want to be very clear that what we are dealing with tonight is not anything in that rezoning narrative, and that if this provisional home occupation is approved, it does not guarantee or imply any approval of those future plans. And the final condition is from the Health Department regarding any public bathroom at the farm being served by a septic system and the plumbed hand sink. Basically clarifying that the outhouse proposal is not a viable option for the site. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
I have one question on this. As far as a decision we make tonight, most of the time we're a recommending body, but tonight the final decision on this does lie with this commission?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. This is not a public hearing. However, I'd like to reserve the right if one of the applicants would like to come forward. Are you the applicant, please?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And also, you may have a couple of questions here as well.
Certainly, I'll be happy to address-
Please give us your name and home address.
Robert Steudle, 6952 Moon Town Drive East.
Would you spell your last name for the record?
S-T-E-U-D-L-E.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Now, I'll go ahead and address first of all the restroom issue as far as the outhouse. That was a proposed option, but of course, under the provisional home occupation, it is considered perfectly acceptable to make available a restroom inside the house, which we are prepared to do as the option. Given the amount of time that guests are actually expected to be there, and the quantity, or the number of guests over the period, we find that to be a very practical answer to that, in that we will make our inside restrooms available.
Does that raise any Americans with Disability Act requirements?
No. So since they're not a commercial location, like commercial business like that, they wouldn't fall under those type of standards.
And also taking note for any future growth, realizing when that no longer becomes adequate, we'll certainly add a proper restroom structure facility when that time comes.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I read the whole thing, narrative and what have you. So you're talking no more than six people, and if I understood it right, you're not going to do fishing at the same time you're doing animal petting? Or how's that? Kind of, run me over how this thing actually is going to operate, because, and is this going to be a for-profit operation? I'm curious. You're just doing it for funsies because you love it, or how's this going to work?
Well, this farm is really our family homestead, and our goal, along with what we're already doing with selling products of the farm, our main focus is actually we're building a family homestead, just where we're growing basically our own food and providing an educational opportunity, which I started initially for my own children, but we've had people express so much interest about learning about the farming that we wanted to open it up to others. And, you know, we've gotten a lot of, we constantly get that response about, "I'd love to come see your farm." People are very grateful to get the naturally-raised products that we provide. And our purpose in doing a lot of this, yes, it is for profit per se, but for the most part, we're basically just trying to do enough right now to fund our homestead. We're not, we're not trying to do a, make a major commercial endeavor per se. We want to share what we're doing, and that costs money to do, and so we really can't afford to do that all for free, but we want to share, share what we've learned, share our experiences, and honestly, it takes money to do that. And it does provide a small amount of employment, mostly within the family, but yeah, I mean, it's really, it's a for-profit, but it's an educational endeavor that is benefiting both our family and-
You want to cover your costs primarily, not necessarily like, you know, let's look at our 10-Q for this quarter and see how much money we made. You just want to make sure you cover your operating costs.
Well, truthfully, we would like to operate well into the black, but this is not a, this is not a wealth endeavor. This is something, we do want to make money off of it.
It's your side gig, not your day job, if you will.
No, really. As Daniel mentioned, I, we do have other businesses that we operate. I'm a licensed massage therapist. We do have an off-site event business. We do have ideas to grow this more, but the main focus of even growing it in the long run is still to provide a community benefit of education, food, not a, for lack of a word, a profiteering venture. It's something to provide some funds to the family, but as much to provide that educational community service.
And then say, you get this thing going, I want to take my wife and my two kids, come out there and fish. I'll call you to make an appointment to come fishing.
That's how it would work. And as you said about fishing tours, the overlap of them, my thought is that some people, they're going to want to come and do both anyways. Not everybody, of course, but I mean, the fishing I think of more so as an add-on to a tour where they may want to come and, "Oh, I'd love to do fishing." Okay.
Reason I ask, I'm concerned about the trips. You keeping it down to what we're going to require, because, you know, your hopes and dreams are big, and I could see this thing getting out of hand, and there's nobody to watch. We won't, you know, you could be having 20 folks a day in and out of there, and we're not going to watch. We don't have the staff, the county does, to make sure you're doing what you're promising us you're going to do. I'm just trying to get a feel for it, what this business looks like.
What does your neighbors, what do they think about it?
You advertised on social media that you have an outpouring of support from your neighbors?
We, I wouldn't say we got an outpouring of response, but we did get, honestly, our response was all but one person was 100% positive, and that person, the issues he concerned, the concerns he addressed, which I honestly, I hadn't seen him here tonight. He said about possibly coming to raise his objections, but his only concern that he objected to was the traffic, which as we were covering here, is going to be very limited.
So we're talking six vehicles a day?
I, maximum.
12 people? What if one of those vehicles is a bus with 20 people on it? How do we, how's that addressed?
Well, there is still a, so for a home occupation, they are limited to, for educational uses like this. This is the same as a daycare or someone who is offering homeschooling. They can only have six people on the site at a time. So while, yes, the bus is only one vehicle, the 20 people would violate the home occupation code.
You know, this, this whole scenario is stretching in home occupation, about far as you can stretch it.
Well, we don't intend to-
Finish. Wait, you had your chance. Let me finish.
Sorry, I didn't.
And by that fact, if I were your neighbor, I wouldn't like it at all. Not necessarily just the traffic, just the idea that I want to move to the country and have me a piece of land and do things like in a farming atmosphere, and then I've got all this activity going on right by me or close to me. That's my feeling.
Well, that's a, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
This is not that we intend to push that limit. I was simply referencing that-
What you're doing is pushing the limit.
Well, I was only using that as a reference that we will not exceed that in any given day. As we noted in the narrative, our family isn't, simply is not going to be available to have that many tours. We have no intention of going up to that limit.
But it's the point that if we approved it tonight, you would have that opportunity. That's what I mean by pushing the limit.
I understand. I see.
Don't you have growth? You have plans for growth, so that would say you're pushing pushing now. Kind of confused. You don't have the resources now. What's going to cause you to have the resources in the future on this property, the neighbors? Your growth, you're going to stay in the same location, correct?
Yes, we would, and at that, at the point that we get to that, we would make the time for that larger operation, but at this time, at this stage, and the S1 that we've taught, the S1 expansion that we've talked about, we do intend to address that in the very near future. So it is staged, but I'm saying at this stage, we're not, and we're not planning to make ourselves available at this stage of the growth, because we do have other things going on, but some of those things, when we get to the point of rezoning for the S1, we will make ourselves available for that. I imagine, this kind of leads into like possible numbers of like how, how big we would grow in that. And honestly, the S1 part is something that when we get to that point of having events and other activities on here, those are numbers that are not part of this application. That's a plan still in development. It's a vision, but I am not prepared to answer those particular numbers about something that is not in consideration.
That's a separate issue entirely.
Yes, that's a separate issue. What I'm referring to is this right here at this stage, we're not trying to fill that, and it's, there is the physical restriction of our own time schedule at this stage.
Okay.
And so we do foresee in the future having the time for all that, but that's not where we're at right now at this stage.
Gentlemen, do you have any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
All right. I will, if I may ask, and one thing, if you have any particular, actually, I mean, if you want, as far as like us keeping a record, if that would help assure you of our traffic flow. I mean, that's something that is an option to consider.
Something that's outside of our ability. That'd have to be with code enforcement to come up with a suggestion like that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I just wanted to let you know, I mean, I'm-
Appreciate it.
In favor of following the-
Awesome.
Limitations and requirements.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
All right. This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, approve with conditions, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to disapprove the H2F1 provisional home occupation application.
Do I hear a second?
I'd like to say it.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of disapproval? Motion to disapprove carries 5-0. Mr. Butler filed VA 220801.
Lieutenant Sheriff, it's a request for a variance at 4311 Wrightsboro Road, Section 9S147 G10B, use provisions for a 24-hour operation for a convenience store. This is the location of the property on the north side of Wrightsboro Road, just to the west of this intersection on Jimmy Dyess Parkway, and also near Augusta, Richmond County. This is the zoning of the property. Again, most of everything around it is zoned C2. Do you have this little area here zoned C3? Across the street, we do have some R1, and also a mixture of C1 and C2, and some CC. So quite a few different zonings in this area. This aerial view of the property, again, it's already constructed, so we're not really burying anything in terms of the actual, you know, physical locations of anything. This is the existing site, existing gas station, the plat of the property, existing site plan. So with the use provisions for a gas station, one of those only allows operation between 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM. That includes all deliveries. That was implemented in 2016. So you have, anything that's been built since then is going to be under those requirements of our convenience store. We've had a few requests to get to make these, or make a gas station 24 hours. There's one actually further down Wrightsboro. It's one of those things that in a code update will probably massage that in some way. That section does also include distance requirements from residentially zoned property, also distance of the actual gas pumps from property lines, and also the requirements for all the fuel on the ground. So again, we're only focusing on the hours of operation in this situation. And from our standpoint, you know, the biggest thing with a 24-hour operation is noise and light. We do have some residential's nearby. Again, this hasn't been open 24/7, so they probably haven't experienced the amount of light that they could experience if they are open 24 hours a day. So one of the things that we do have with a condition that does require them to give us a light plan that shows how they're going to shield or direct the light away from those residential properties. The other thing too, is that with noise, that's primarily caused by, you know, trucks sitting there idling while they deliver any kind of, any kind of product to the property. So we are keeping in place the requirement that the deliveries can't occur for 24 hours either. So again, we are recommending approval with the following conditions. Again, the lighting we've already kind of talked about, they will require to give us a lighting plan, and also the other provisions, Section 9S147 shall apply, including deliveries. That includes staff recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Is there anything you'd like to come forward at? Yes, sir. Please come, give us your name and home address.
My name is Hamrazdi Baidwan.
Would you spell your last name, please? First and last name, if you would.
Hamrazdi Baidwan.
Would you spell your first and last name for the record? Never gotten that.
I go by Sonny. That's easy. Last name is Baidwan, B-A-I-D-W-A-N.
What would you like to-
I live in North Carolina. I'm one of the partners in that business. Most of the businesses around us, the convenience stores and hotels around us are 24 hours, and we've had at least five break-ins between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM when we opened. Neither one of those caught, caused a lot of damage. The only reason for us to be open at that time is to prevent that kind of damage. A big window that was shattered about a month ago, just somebody walking through a brick. So that's the main reason for us.
Okay.
24 hours.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file VA 220801, variance to allow 24/7 operation of the gas station at 4311 Washington Wrightsboro Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes 5-0. Ms. Mystery filed RZ 220801, major PUD revision.
Yes, sir. This is a location at the intersection of Ronald Reagan Drive and North Bel Air Road. It's a PUD plan revision on 1.2 acres. Current zoning is PUD for the Evans Society Center of PUD, and there is a retail buildings under construction at the moment. It's a major PUD revision for sign allowance. Here is the location plan at the intersection of the two roads. This is the PUD zoning and the surrounding zoning. There is M2 industrial to the east of North Bel Air Road. Most of the PUD is part of the PUD Plaza as well. There is some commercial and office zoning close by. The last revision for the PUD was last year when the two commercial buildings were approved with the drive-through as well. Here is the aerial, and it does look different now that it is under construction. Here is the existing site with the groundwork's happening, and if you drive past it today, you'll actually see the framing of the building as well. Here's the site with the PAC and the Maybaum Building behind it, and this is the area under review. The plat of the property as well. And this is the location plan showing the two commercial buildings and the business's goat kick coffee, and it would be located at the north end of the multi-tenant building. This is the approved site plan, which shows the drive-through where the blue arrow is, and the proposed sign will go where the red dot is on the side. This is a rendering of the proposed development. It shows quite modern architecture, and the arrow is pointing to the sign that's for the PUD revision. The previous PUD allowed signs on the walls of the front and back, so facing Bel Air Road and facing the PAC. And so this is the, technically, the third sign the business is requesting, and it's a painted mural on the brick wall, and approximately 13 by 13, which is over the sign code allowance. This is the view on the other side, facing the PAC, and it's not going to be visible from there. So just some context about signage. A lot of the older designs were lighted box signs. As businesses change, they've gone away. We get more applications for channel letters, and in this immediate area, you've got buildings like Evans Dermatology and the Performing Arts Center that use channel letters as well. The Maybaum Building does have an area that was allowed for public art. This was a sign that they've put up when the building was built. The idea behind that is to have, change, signs that change over time and have more places for art. So the downtown area, areas are typically known in- for art, so that downtown areas are typically known in most cities to have art and murals and things like that. So generally, it's in keeping with that vision. So staff is recommending approval for the sign. The previous conditions for file RC 211206 still apply. There's a condition that the painted sign be allowed at a maximum of 75 square feet, which is the allowance for the business signage.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Okay. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Anything you'd like to add to the presentation? All right. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, and is there anyone that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file RC 220801, major PUD revision to allow painted wall sign not to exceed 170 square feet for the property off Ronald Reagan Drive. I think that's supposed to be 75. Is it not? I'd like to revise that motion to 75 feet.
You can say to approve with conditions because it's spelled out in conditions. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes five zero. File RC 220802, Ms. Montgomery. But before you start, I'd like to say the applicant has asked for us to consider postponing this until September 1. So since this has been advertised, we'll go ahead and hear the presentation, and if there's anybody that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning, we can hear it. We're not sure how they're going to amend their presentation. I know they're working with the county on several issues, so if you have something that you'd like to speak, you know, against on this, you might want to hold it until we see what the final presentation is. But if you do want to get your comment on record, we will ask you to come forward. That being said, Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a major revision at 2540 William View Parkway to the existing S1 special zoning. This is the location of the property at the corner of William View Parkway and Clanton Road. Somewhat relevant to the property immediately to the north is the property that is under consideration for rezoning for the Laurel's PRD. Surrounding properties are currently zoned residential agricultural to the north and the west, and PUD for Whispering Pines to the east. On the opposite side of William View, there is another church as well as additional residential development. This is the aerial view of the property with the existing church building and the existing This is the approved site plan for this property from their 2008 rezoning. We're mainly going to be looking at this area right in here. So there were four phases of development laid out on this plan, included the Phase Two multipurpose building as well as additional educational buildings, and then Phase Four of kind of, this Phase Four area is the additional educational facility, gym, and activity fields. That Phase Four area is not changing with this plan, so that is staying as is. So the revisions here are in regards to the location of that building. That building. These two buildings, so the new plan splits Phase Two into a Phase Two A and Two B. So Two A includes the placement of portable classroom trailers on the existing gravel parking lot and the installation of a new gravel parking lot to serve temporarily until the new permanent educational building is constructed. That would be Phase Two B, would be the new educational building and then paving of that parking lot. This is the existing gravel parking lot where the portable classrooms would be placed. This is internal to the site, so it should not be particularly visible from the public roads. And while there is a new driveway access over here out to Clanton Road, that would be paved, so that should minimize any tracking of gravel out onto the paved portion of Clanton Road there. All right. So Phase Three then includes the additional multipurpose building, so once the portable classrooms can be removed, they would be replaced with this additional permanent building. And then again, Phase Four up here, this is unchanged from the current approved site plan, that is the additional educational facility. Additional improvements include connecting the existing and the future facilities to the county sewer, as well as potential entrance improvements, which are to be coordinated with traffic engineering as site plans are submitted for each phase of the development. That is basically part of the request to postpone is to coordinate the traffic improvements and conditions with those that may be required with the PRD on Clanton Road. The fire marshal has also noted that they will need to ensure that the access road reaches within 150 feet of all of the buildings, so that will be taken care of with the site plan reviews. In terms of the future development map, this property is within the Neighborhood's Activity Center. This is primarily a residential area, but it does allow for civic uses such as churches, schools, and parks. This very much is in keeping with that character area. It is already in use as a church, and that use is not changing, so this is just a revision to the site plan. Staff was recommending approval with conditions regarding the traffic improvements, but as noted, the applicants have requested to postpone this item.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Is there anything you'd like to add to their presentation? All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing to, and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone until September 1, 2022.
Make a motion, postpone until September.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of postponing until September 1? Motion to postpone passes five zero. We have no legal matters. Do we have any staff or commissioner comments? Okay. I'd like to thank Commissioner Lek Couch for coming out tonight, attending our pre-meeting and this meeting, and again, we're here to help you be a success for your constituents and the rest of the county. Do we have any, any public comments? Seeing none, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
No motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to adjourn passes five zero at 6:37 PM. Next meeting is 22 in these chambers. Thanks for coming out.
Chairman Sandbaggin.
I tried.